Good evening and welcome to the school board meeting of Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, regular meeting of District 25 School Board. I'm going to call the meeting to order and go start with a roll call, please. Lana?
Member Conley?
Here.
Member Olenichak?
Here.
Member Sherniglia?
Here.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Here.
Member Philipek?
Here.
Thank you, Lana. We'll go into a pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, we start our board meeting with our favorite part of the agenda, which is recognitions and presentations. And we're first going to be huge congratulations to the students that qualified for the 2022 All Illinois Junior Band. Bye.
Thank you. Is our director, Ms. Candace Horton, here today? Candace, congratulations for you and your students. Absolutely. Thank you. We will share their names. Assad Shadri on trumpet, Emily Colton on percussion, Cassandra Gonzalez alto saxophone, Henry Ulrich on clarinet, and Sophie Ulrich on the French horn. We know that these students had to do quite a application and do some selections, provide some recordings for the board to be judged for acceptance, with over several hundred applicants involved, so quite an accomplishment that they're being recognized. So, congratulations to all of them and also to Ms. Horton on your work. Thank you.
We're now going to move on to recognition of another group of students of South and Thomas Middle School Track and Field State Qualifiers.
And our coaches last year were Dave Fritner, Kim Radzik, Tyler Stordahl, and Jim Zimmerman from South Middle School, and then Katie Buer, Becky Fano, Nicole Jaeger, Joe Kim, and Todd Slawinski from Thomas. Are any of our coaches here today? Would you like to come forward and share anything, or you just have a video for us?
If you play the video, we'll just follow along with a quick recap.
Excellent.
This is a special tribute to Dave Fritner at the end of the season here. This is 30 years of coaching, track and field for him, and I think that it's safe to say that his athletes felt the love from him. They thrive because of his expertise and his dedication. We're going to sorely miss him this year. We have big truths to fill, sorry, guarantees to fill in Dave Fritner and to the few truths we can't forget. And we have some of the South kids come up here so we can just individually recognize you guys. Come on up right over here.
So, I know we saw the slideshow, but I just wanted to kind of go through it just one more time to recognize the fantastic accomplishments that these athletes had last year, and not all of them are here today.
Very few, actually. But we've got our current eighth graders. Our current eighth graders are here. Our eighth graders that were with us last year are now freshmen, and so they're on to bigger and better things at this point. But I think that we'd like to just recognize these guys. This year, we took 10 All-State Qualifiers to the state meet this year, and specifically, we even had three, we had three athletes. Go ahead and get their names on our, we have a plaque in our building that Dave Fritner established for us that are record breakers. And so, we have Hazel Nadal made, broke a record in the 200-meter dash. We had Hazel in the 200, Eva in the long jump, and the high jump. And we're super excited that these guys are returning with us this year. Mary Russell in the long jump. And then, I'm going to let Tyler wrap up here.
We also had a record-breaking four-by-200-meter relay. Hazel Nadal, Isabel Isla, Kendall Niemick, and Grace Lissy. They ran a record-breaking four-by-two during our season, and...
This is Andrew Morris, and Andrew was a part of our four-by-two relay. Really excited. We're hoping that those boys are going to come back, and they're going to crush it, come in the top three this year. Do you want Andrew's in there?
I think they're good. All right.
Well done, you guys.
Very well done.
Super proud of you guys. Enough. Not quite the trophy you might have gotten, but we like it. Congratulations. Congratulations. How was it today? Oh, thank you. How cute.
Can our athletes come out as well? I know we have, we have a few of them over here. Unfortunately, we didn't make a video. Sorry about that. But we just wanted to highlight just a couple awesome features about our kids. We started right before spring break last year, and at one point, I think we surpassed 200 students at one point on those Thomas fields outside. So, it was what we like to call controlled chaos. But we had, we had a lot of fun this year, and we had several athletes who placed at states, and we wanted to just congratulate those. Excuse me. Tim Stevens got 12th at state in hurdles. We have Sophia Coliando, who got fifth in 200-meter, second in the long jump, the runner-up. And Bryce McGwin got 10th in the 400-meter race, actually achieving a school record. So, her name will go up on our board eventually. We promised Bryce. Griffin Euler got 15th in the 400-meter race and also in the 1600. Will Capto got ninth in the 1600. Mateus got 11th in the 1600. Sophia Calendrini got 11th in discus, 13th in shot. Kate Donovan got sixth in long jump. And our girls four-by-twos in the seventh grade, Audrey Lisota, Sydney Voico, Emily Haney, Abby Fosser, and Ola Copas got 12th. And then, our eighth grade girls, Kate Donovan, Gracey Lisota, Shannon Conroy, Sophia Coliando, and Helena Vincent got fourth overall at state. So, we had a lot of proud accomplishments here, and I think for the first time ever, Sophia Coliando placed at three medals. I think that's her first ever since Naya Carr back in 2012 era. So, that was a huge accomplishment we had. Yeah, so we were all very proud of all of our athletes who were able to participate, and we're missing several who weren't here as well. Oh, yeah. And we also wanted to celebrate our district, South and Thomas. Sectionals, I think that's where 15 schools come together and compete to qualify for state. And out of those 15 schools, for seventh grade girls, Arlington Heights South got first place, seventh grade boys, Arlington Heights Thomas got first place, eighth grade girls, Arlington Heights South got first place, and eighth grade boys, Arlington Heights Thomas got first place. So, we came home with four plaques. I thought that was a huge accomplishment in Arlington Heights.
Thank you.
The, the board is always amazed. We have a lot of runners in our district. It motivates us. Maybe we're going to get our running shoes on because we have a lot of teachers, superintendent, we have lots of runners and bikers too, who we appreciate. So, thank you a lot very much. And if you folks want to go home and go grab some ice cream and celebrate your great accomplishment, go for it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
starting with Board Member Updates. I have some updates, but I'm going to give my colleagues an opportunity first. Any updates that you'd like to share?
Madam President.
Yes, go.
I'd love to share with all my colleagues here. I've had the opportunity, in the two weeks since we've seen each other, to attend the opening day event here in District 25, and there's probably no better place to get a sense of what it's like in one encapsulated place, to see what, what's it like in a district? What does it feel like to work here? And it was, it was such a great event. Tons of positive energy, lots of smiles, you know, people just greeting, you know, their colleagues after the summer, just great school vibes. The big screen in Thomas's gym, it felt like being at the United Center, like the way that slideshow was going on. And I also wanted to highlight, since you guys didn't get to be there, the speakers. And so, Allison Burr talked to us about, you know, boring can be the best, right? Wishing you a normal year. And Anisha talked, and she shared with us, you know, how, how we make someone feel can really impact them for life. And then, Dr. Kay was a masterful emcee, but also let us know, you know, it's, it's not the plane, but the pilot that makes a difference. And then, of course, Dr. Vine walked us through about reconnecting and reclarifying, reclarifying, so we can make stronger connections, you know, with our colleagues and with the students. So, I've been a teacher for over 20 years. I've been to many of these things, and I can tell you, this one, no joke, was in my top five. So, kudos to everyone, and thank you for letting me be there and just witness the whole event.
Yeah, for sure. Many of us board members attend, and it's definitely one of our favorite events, you know, going every year. It's such, so much energy in that room and so many smiles, and to be there in person, be with everybody, it really is truly, I want to say magical. It's a, it's a really great event to motivate and see how inspiring educators go out to serve. About 850 educators getting ready to serve all the students in our district. So, that was great. And in the beginning of the school year, school board members also welcome new teachers. And the ATA puts together a nice event to welcome them. It was so great to see them, very excited to join our district. Many of them, their goal was to, you know, graduate and come to District 25, and so we hire the best of the best, and it was great to welcome them to our district. So, thank you, ATA, for putting that event together and giving us the opportunity as a board to be there to welcome them because they're very much what our teachers, what makes our district so special. Moving forward, we will go on to Ed Redd with Board Member Rich and Stacy Malik reporting.
No comment, or not no comment. That'd be a rarity sometimes, but nothing to report.
Can we write the data?
Ed Summer from Ed Redd. ISB, you know, board members, that conference is going to be coming up in November. You could tell, I love it because I talk about it at every school board meeting, and we're, most of us, the majority of our board is able to attend this year, so we're really excited. So, board members, keep an eye out when you get the program booklet. Lana will also remind us. But when you get that program booklet, kind of thumb through it. We're going to do some things a little bit different this year, whereas when, look through what sessions you interest you and what kind of piques your interest, so that when we come back from the conference, we'll kind of share our learning, so we can all kind of see, okay, what, what, because we have, our board is really diverse, a lot of diversity of expertise and skill and thoughts. And so, when you go into your sessions, we'll get a window into what you learned and all increase our own learning at the same time. So, watch for that board schedule. It should be coming out soon, and we'll kind of create a table, a rubric of where everybody's gone, so that if something, if we miss something, say Brian's going to a session, and I was like, oh, wow, I didn't see it, I can jump on and go to that session as well. So, we'll be doing a lot of sharing and learning at the ISB conference when we spend our weekend there in November, attending learning sessions. Otherwise, NSSEO, Scott?
Yeah, just briefly, just like District 25, NSSEO kicked off the school year successfully with, hit the ground running. They're very proud that this year, they hired nearly 70 new staff members that they're training, getting ready to go. So, they're very excited to bring some, some fresh faces and some, some very passionate teachers into the NSSEO community, and hopefully, it's going to bring just another great year to NSSEO to help out District 25 kids that are participating in their programs. So, I'll have more next meeting.
Thanks so much, Scott, for attending those. You know, for those of you who don't know, NSSEO Board is like, almost like a full-on extra meetings that Scott attends on our behalf and reports back on us, to us. So, thank you so much, Scott, for that information.
I have to arm wrestle Gina to go to him because she's as passionate as, as ever to attend. It's a rewarding experience.
Yep, we have our team of Scott and Gina. Moving on, we're going to go on to Community Input, and I'm going to read our statement before that. Now, "The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. And the board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meetings in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Number one, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Number two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. And please be respectful and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or our staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but be assured, we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community." Lana, do we have some comments this evening? Okay, thank you.
Melissa Kair speaking. Don't vote for the, the general obligation school bonds. The Cook County property tax system is in disarray. Don't add to the chaos by putting on this big debt onto our property tax bill. Also, I would rather have a lower tax, property tax bill than a higher property tax bill to support expanded government-run daycare. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, we are going to go to Communications from District Partners, starting with PTA with Nicole reporting.
Good evening. Hi. So, each school's PTA is up and running for another exciting school year. Many units held back-to-school social events for families, which were enjoyed by all. Special thanks to our PTA volunteers, especially those in leadership roles, for their enthusiasm and dedication to the students and staff of District 25. We are so grateful for all you do. AHC has had a busy August. We have attended our annual Northwest Cook Region Back-to-PTA Event with other leaders in our surrounding areas, participated in summer officer training courses, and met as a council to collaborate and plan for the year. As a district, our membership numbers are soaring. We have over 2,800 families who have joined the PTA this year. Thank you to the families that have joined and to those who have made donations to the Arlington Heights Council of PTA Scholarship Fund during registration. As a member of the PTA, you help build a positive connection between home and school. Being a part of the PTA means that you provide all children with meaningful experiences and programs, such as author visits, assemblies, and opportunities to join clubs. In addition, the PTA shows appreciation for staff by providing meals at conference time, lounge supplies, fun classroom celebrations, and a meaningful teacher appreciation week. The PTA also empowers parents and caregivers to advocate for change at the local, state, and national levels of government. It's never too late to join the PTA, so if you haven't done so already, please become an advocate for all children and join your school's PTA today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nicole, for all your...
Do I get a pen, too?
Yes, you may. You may.
Okay. You, very well-deserved pen for you, Nicole. Thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership. And did I hear that correctly? We have over half of our families have joined PTA? That's, that's amazing thus far. So, definitely, if you're listening, join the PTA. My husband always does the registration, so I have to remind him. If he hasn't, I will be telling him to contact our PTA to do that as well. So, thank you so much. Next, we have ABC25 Foundation, now Board Member Gina Faso usually reports on that and cannot be here today. I'm not sure if we have a report from...
No, they have a meeting coming up in the next week or two.
Okay.
I wore my 5K shirt today when I ran. It's for the ABC25, so.
There you go. And what was your time, Board Member Philipek?
No comment.
No, that's awesome. It's a good shirt. Thank you. Next up, ATA, Allison Berg, please. And you can have a pen, too, if we forget to say it at the end.
Boring's good. Good evening. Our school year is up and running, off and running. Students and teachers are happy to be back and getting used to new routines. The pictures you're about to see, you can play them if you want, highlight some of the events taking place across the district, and others are just of students and a few teachers sharing the best things about being back at school. So, enjoy.
You don't have to play the music if you don't want to, Adam.
Windsor School had their annual Wildcat Walkabout this year already to start the school year. This takes place at the start of each year, and students walk around the building and discuss the expectations of all the places they're going to visit throughout the day. Students talk about expectations for the lunchroom, the playground, and hallways, and even the bathrooms. It's a great reminder for students to start the year off right. Greenbrier kicked off the new school year with an all-school assembly. They welcomed the kindergartners and all their new students by calling them up to the stage. The fifth graders offered each new student a, or each new Gator a "We Are Greenbrier" t-shirt, and Chompers the Gator made his first appearance of the school year as well, and there's a picture of him in my slideshow. Dryden had, also had a back-to-school assembly, and on Monday, August 15th, they had a meet and greet, the teacher event, with an ice cream social sponsored by the PTA. Thanks again for our PTA. Ivy Hill had an author and multilingual educational specialist, Carly Spina, speak to the Ivy staff, and after listening to her, the staff decided to discover and celebrate all the wonderful languages that are spoken by their students and families. And some teachers made a pact showcasing all the different languages. Actually, there is a slide right there that shows the different languages spoken in the different classrooms, which is super cool. South had an assembly as well to kick off this school year with a guy named Tim. That's amazing. The kids loved it. I also had a teacher just report to me walking in, just to share that she has sixth-grade students, and she said she had all the kids like write down about how their first week of sixth grade was, and all the kids are like, it's so, it's not nearly as scary as I thought it was going to be. The teachers are so nice, so it was just really nice to see that that transition went so smoothly for our sixth graders. At Westgate, the first day of school began with the tradition where all students and families meet outside for the pledge. Two students lead the pledge, and this year's theme is Team Westgate: Better Together. On Friday, Westgate also held their first all-school assembly outside to celebrate the new school year. All this excitement, and it hasn't even been one week, so I am looking forward to presenting again next month about the many awesome things going on in the district. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Allison. Moving forward to the Consent Agenda, which is an action item. Need a motion, please?
Madam President.
Yes.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the Consent Agenda as follows. A, personal report, an addendum to personal report. B, invoices. C, regular enclosed session meeting minutes of August 9th, 2022.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
I'm staying.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Moving on to Business and, is it, there's no discussion for this item. We'll move on forward. Okay.
Is it, excuse me?
Yes.
Is it possible if we do Facilities first and come back? Liz isn't able, oh, okay, never mind.
There you go. Hello, Liz.
Hi.
Okay. Perfect timing. We're gonna go, move forward to Business and Finance. This is an action item. If my colleagues can call the vote.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $62 million general obligation school bonds of District for the purpose of projects approved by referendum at the June 28th, 2022 general primary election, providing for levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal interest on the bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Thank you, Greg. And now, can I have a second, please?
No second.
Thank you, Scott. Stacy Malik, please.
So, Liz was unable to be here tonight, but her associate Linda Byron is here if the board has specific questions on the resolution. But this resolution does set the parameter for the upcoming bond sale. It's good for six months. The parameters that are included in the resolution are not to exceed a 20-year maturity of the total bond issue, a maximum principal amount of $5.99 million per year, a maximum the total bond issue, a maximum principal amount of $5.99 million per year, a maximum interest rate of 6%, and early redemption, not earlier than December 15th of 2031. Upon the sale of the bonds, which is scheduled for August 30th, this resolution then authorizes the President of the Board and myself to proceed with the sale in coordination with Raymond James, our, and Liz, our bond consultants, as long as the sale terms are following the parameters set forth in the resolution.
Thank you very much. And does the board have any questions at this point? I'd like to say, you know, we, as a board, I'd just like to, there's a statement that we, that I had put together on behalf of the board, really wanted, wanting to thank the community for their civic engagement in this most recent referendum, and we really appreciate the valuable input we had received from our stakeholders. And during this, we spent many, many months as a board carefully considering the extensive solutions-focused research regarding fiscally responsible ways to upkeep our school buildings and expand our services to provide full-day kindergarten. And ultimately, through the referendum, the board's intention was to seek input and guidance from our community as we continue to steer our district forward, and we completely understand and appreciate that our community has diverse perspectives, and we will continue to be here to listen and consider all input as we ensure that our school buildings are maintained, in addition to beginning the process of providing full-day kindergarten to those families who choose to take advantage of it. And ultimately, this referendum and every decision we make as a board is for the sake of our students. So I think we're, I wanted to be sure I stated that on the record, too. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Dr. Bryant, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, Lana, please. Yeah, call the roll, please, for the vote.
Member Sherniglia?
Before I vote, I just kinda wanna reiterate some of my past thoughts and comments on this, because again, this is, these are economic times that are not the best to be borrowing money you don't have in. We have several thousand voters that were opposed to us spending this amount of money. We've had many conversations about the capital expenditure needs, coupled with the desire to consider full-time kindergarten. You know, personally, I, my kids went through a successful career at District 25 with half-time kindergarten, and so as a parent and a taxpayer, I think part-time kindergarten is pretty sufficient. Ultimately, as I said here, that I think, I don't believe the seven of us should be making a financial decision on our own, significant financial decision on our own, so we put it out to the vote. And so I just wanted to kinda go on record that this has been, you know, I've been pretty torn about, you know, how to approach this in the best way, but ultimately, the vote came through, so in support of that on June 28th, I will support this with a yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Maybe similar to Brian, also have a comment. You know, one of my oppositions or one of my strong questions on this was the capital portion of this, and, you know, I still think that that's something that should, we should find a way to fund that rather than going out and funding this for something that we're gonna be paying back for 20 years. 20 years, that's a five-year problem, because in year six, if we don't do something today, we don't have any funds to cover those as well. So my vote on this is a no.
Okay, the vote passes. Five, one. Thank you. We'll now move on to, and before I move on, I do wanna appreciate my board members, my colleagues' input, and thank you for sharing your perspectives. They're all very important. We're gonna move on to facilities management, and I see Bryant here, and this is an action item.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education renew the standard form of agreement with STR Partners for Architect Services.
Thank you, Greg. Bryant?
Second.
It's been a long summer. Thank you, Scott.
Yes, good evening. This is for the updated agreement for STR Partners. This is an update and renewal to the agreement between AHSD 25 and STR Partners from 2015. Since we use a construction manager for larger projects, this form of agreement has been updated to the AIA document specifically for construction manager model. So again, before, we had a standard form of agreement in place. Now, since we're solely dedicated to using the construction manager model for this, it is a specific AIA form that is very similar, but just a little bit, few nuances to make it alignment more with the construction manager model. There may be a future master agreement solely dedicated to projects that are not operated with a construction manager. So again, STR Partners does projects annually. That way, we may just go out to bid on our own where the construction manager is not involved. We would have a different master agreement in place for that at a future date down the line, probably closer to the summer months. So again, this one is solely based on projects where we will use our construction manager to manage projects. STR Partners has been in District Architects since 2015 and completed numerous projects related to additions and renovations in annual capital projects with much success. A highlight of their projects include the additions and renovations at Olive Mary Stit, Ivy Hill, Thomas Middle School, which actually received the Village of Arlington Heights Excellence in Design Award back in 2018, Windsor, Greenbrier, Patton, South Gym renovations, along with various other annual capital projects. STR has a great understanding of District 25 facilities and provides designs that are both architectural pleasing while being cost-effective and meeting the future needs of the district. In general, highlights of the negotiated changes include cost estimating responsibilities have now been transferred over to Nicholas and Associates solely. That is the best practice in the industry, because Nicholas has the most exposure to those types of things. So the cost estimating portion of the project has solely been transferred over to Nicholas and Associates to do, where the architect will now have oversight on that, just giving their input and review instead of establishing any estimates. The fee percentage structure has been negotiated favorably for AHSD 25 and comparable to surrounding school districts. A full-fee schedule capsule is included in the master agreement and will be in place for five years. How the fee is calculated for STR remains unchanged from past contracts, but their total fee is calculated on the total cost of work, including the CM portion. So the CM portion is included in the total cost of work, which is considered standard practice, considering a general contractor may be used on these projects for other districts, and the fee schedule is set up similar to that structure. STR has also requested a number of language updates that do not have a material impact on this agreement. So again, minor changes throughout the agreement, just based on the updated form. Future project authorization exhibits may be generated further defining project-specific roles, responsibility, and information according to this master agreement. So what that means is, on a project basis, we may come forward with an agreement that has some nuances that may not align perfectly with the master agreement, so the project authorization exhibit will allow us to make some minor changes to the agreement and proceed with the project scope based on that. This agreement has been reviewed by our legal counsel and provides risk mitigation strategies related to the Architect Services for Errors and Omissions, General Liability Insurance, and Professional Liability, et cetera. We look forward to working with STR for these projects and meeting the needs for AHSD well into the future. I'm open to any questions you may have regarding this agreement.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We're gonna vote. Lana, if you could call the vote, please.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Okay, vote passes, and Ryan, we're gonna, if you could share with us a construction management company agreement. Oh, and it is an action item, so if we could have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education renew the standard form of agreement with Nicholas and Associates, Inc., for a construction manager as a constructor services.
Okay, a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott.
Great work, Greg. It's a silly word in there that they put in there to trip us up, I think. The updated agreement is to align the construction manager as a constructor with the most current AIA documents for the services provided. So the constructor portion is that Nicholas will be providing construction services where they're managing the actual contractors. Another form is agency, where they're just like an owner's representative, where they're not really managing the contractors day-to-day. So Nicholas, we do have as our constructor, where they're kinda acting as a general contractor but providing other services as well. Nicholas has successfully provided construction manager service for projects that were listed in the STR addition, in addition to the number of annual capital projects since 2015. They have ensured our projects have met the required schedule and were in the expected cost parameters for these projects. The District and Nicholas Associates are parties to an existing master agreement from 2015, which was an AIA 2009 form. Again, this agreement was updated to the 2017 version. The new agreement is the current AIA form and includes a number of updates and revisions, but does not include material changes to the relationship or contract terms. The fee schedule remains the same as previously outlined. This agreement has been reviewed by our legal counsel and provides various risk mitigation strategies related to insurance, quality subcontractors, payments, warranty items. In addition, it defines the services they will provide, including cost estimating, bidding, project management, onsite management, subcontractor invoicing, et cetera. Again, similar to the STR agreement, future project authorization exhibits may be brought forward, further defining project-specific scope, costs, fees, project-specific provisions, et cetera. So in the future, if another project comes up, we can work on some of the minor nuances in their agreement and bring that forward and change them in a project authorization exhibit. We look forward to the continued services that Nicholas provides to AHSDE, and I'm open to any questions you may have on their agreement.
Thanks a lot, Ryan. Any questions, discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Oh, and we still have one more, right? I need an action for this item, for engineer agreement.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education renew the agreement for services for Ericsson Engineering to provide civil engineering services for Arlington Heights School District 25.
Thank you, Greg. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Ryan, thank you.
And finally, the civil engineering portion. The civil engineering agreement is to replace the current existing agreement that went into place as well in 2015. The updated agreement provides the most current legal requirements and several non-material impacts to the service and compensation. In general, Ericsson requested to clarify the following in this agreement, where their scope may be narrowed by a particular project if it is agreed upon. So again, if the services are smaller, we can agree upon those services to be reduced. To revise the language in the Ericsson will observe the work instead of inspect. So I equate this to what we would expect an engineer to do, where they're gonna be going out and making visual observations and not physically inspecting or doing destructive testing or non-destructive testing. They're gonna be doing a visual observation, so they're not gonna be climbing in a manhole and going through the sewer, so there's no inspection services. So that's the varying language between the observe and inspect. We are fine with that. And Ericsson will assist the district in obtaining permits but not obtain the permits directly, and that's just a risk mitigation on their behalf, that they will not be the ones maintaining them or acquiring them. So we were in agreement with that as well. Due to the widely varying scope in civil engineering services that may be encountered, their compensation will be defined in future project authorization exhibits, which may include a percentage of the fee of the cost of the work, a lump-sum amount, or negotiated hourly services. Additional services that are outside the basic services will be provided by Ericsson as needed in a proposal, in a project authorization exhibit. In particular, the traffic studies were something that were outside of their scope and would be a proposed item. This agreement has also been reviewed by our legal counsel and provides necessary risk mitigation for insurance, professional liability, site visits, defective work, reviewing the progress of work, et cetera. Again, we look forward to working with Ericsson for these future projects and look forward to keeping them going.
Thank you so much, Ryan. And as we embark on capital projects and lots of projects here in District 25, we feel very confident that they're in your expert hands, and we, all the care and the diligence and the hard work that you put towards us, we really appreciate it as a board. Thank you so much, Ryan. And any other questions, discussion before we go to vote? Okay. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Member Conley? Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
The next item is also an action item under Personnel and Planning, so I need a motion to approve the ESP, T-Carn, Food and Nutrition Services topic.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve the following staff handbooks for the 2022, 2023 school year as submitted. Education Support Personnel Handbook, Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse Handbook, Food and Nutrition Services Handbook, Guest Teacher Handbook.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Dr. Kay?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share some of the changes and updates to the four employee handbooks as we prepare for the 22, 23 school year. Annually, the Personnel and Planning Department updates the employee handbooks, including the ESP, the T-Carn, the Food and Nutrition Services, and the Guest Teacher/Substitute Handbook. Connecting the purpose of updating these employee handbooks, it is important to note that the goal of reviewing these handbooks is to attract, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality, and innovative employees. In addition, we seek to cultivate a healthy climate and culture that creates conditions to support and meet the needs of all the learners. The contents of the employee handbooks address items that impact employee health, safety, and culture. I'll begin by highlighting the recommended changes to the ESP handbook. Other than the logos in the ESP handbook, we updated the most significant change was the addition of retirement examples to make it more clear when there are increases for staff that meet the criteria, when the increases take place. Any questions on the ESP handbook? And I think I got all of the logo changes. Next, I would like to highlight some of the recommended updates to the T-Carn, which is the Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurses handbook. So similar to the ESP handbook, we have updates to the logo throughout, updates to the salaries for each employee group, and the same retirement examples that were put in the ESP handbook as well. Lastly, at the suggestion of the attorney, the other significant change is the removal of the physical demands section on the job descriptions. For example, there are approximate percentages of how often an employee would be stooping, kneeling, crouching, and crawling. So the suggestion was to remove those pieces from the job description, because they're arbitrary. Any questions from the T-Carn handbook? Next, I'd like to highlight some of the recommended updates to the Food and Nutrition Services handbook. In addition to the logos also being updated throughout, the purpose and the goals were updated to more closely align with current practice, and the uniform and grooming standards were updated with the middle-school kitchen staff being provided chef coats or aprons, which must be returned upon resignation or retirement, so it is used as a retention incentive. We updated the section on staff identification badges as well. And lastly, the same update to the job descriptions as in the T-Carn handbook. Any questions with the Food and Nutrition Services? All right. And last, the Guest Teacher handbook. We updated the logos, updated the requirements to become a sub in the district, and finally, a possible update to the compensation section, which will be in just a moment. So tonight, I'm asking that the Board of Education take action on the recommended updates to the ESP handbook, T-Carn handbook, Food and Nutrition Services handbook, and the Guest Teacher handbook. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of and the exceptional service that all of these groups of employees provide our students. The service of all of these groups provide a critical, are critical to the success, allowing us to continue operating smoothly each and every day in educating our children. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the recommended changes and updates as written in the ESP, T-Carn, Food and Nutrition Services, and Guest Teacher handbook. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Kay. Seeing no questions. Lana, could you please call the vote?
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
It's on right now. There you go.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is an action item as well.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Guest Teacher rate increase as presented.
Thank you, Greg. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Dr. Kay?
All right. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recommend an increase in- Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recommend an increase in rates for our valuable group of employees known as the guest teachers, or also known as the substitute teachers. This group of employees is extremely valuable asset and one that we want to continue finding ways to attract and retain the support that they provide our staff throughout the school year. The work of a guest teacher is challenging and rewarding. Our dedicated guest teachers continue to come back and serve in our community year after year because of the great connections they've made with our building staff. My recommendation tonight is to increase the daily rate for subs that are in what we call random assignments that serve from building to building each week, filling needs throughout the district each and every day, and incentivize those who sub in random assignments to keep subbing throughout the year. So my recommendation is to make the daily rate for guest teachers $128 per day for days 1 through 20. Starting on day 21, they would level up to be earning $138 for days 21 through 40. And to continue providing incentives to have subs continue working more days, we would level up again on day 41 through 60, earning $150 per day in random assignments. And the final level up would be those who are serving with us 61 days, not in a row, but 61 days total, leveling up to level four, earning $160 per day in random assignments. I believe this change will encourage and hopefully provide an incentive for our current subs to continue taking more assignments throughout the school year. To keep them coming back next year, our subs that work 60-plus days, making it to level four, we would start them the following year at level four as well. If they work another 60 days that next school year, they will continue to be at level four the following year. We hope that this incentive would encourage our consistent subs that dedicate all their time to District 25 to continue coming back and work more days. So there is one more incentive that I want to point out, and that is for the retired teachers collecting a pension, whether it's from District 25 or another district, that they would start at level two, making $138 per day. The benefit is to our students because they're certified teachers who have retired. Lastly, I'm recommending that we increase the sub rate for our teaching assistant subs as well to $110 per day for a six-hour position. So tonight, I am asking that the Board of Education take action in recommending the update to the guest teacher rate increase. The service this group provides is critical to our success, allowing us to continue operating smoothly each and every day in educating our children. At this time, I recommend that the Board approve the recommended changes and updates as written in the guest teacher rate increase. Are there any questions?
Just one question. How many teachers per day, guest teachers, do we have per day on average?
So today, we had 43 absences of certified staff, and we had three that went unfilled. I'd say when the year gets going, it's not uncommon for us to have 70 guest teachers working in a day.
Thank you. Can you follow up?
No, it's good, thank you. I just wanted, I'm just trying to in my head do the math and just understand, right? Because if we don't fill them, then there's other options we have to correct. We can fill them with other teachers who can step in, but that's actually also more potential cost to us as a, as a district.
Yes, so we have agreed with our union that we have internal sub coverage. So teachers during their planned time or lunchtime can voluntarily choose to sub. That happens regularly. So luckily, our teachers are also willing to chip in often. So we're able to fill those three unfilled by not only utilizing our current teachers, utilizing our teaching assistants, and we will utilize the subs that are already with us. We'll have them work more periods because a daily assignment sub doesn't necessarily have to plan for the next day's instruction. So during their planned time, we'll also have them sub in another classroom.
Thank you, Dr. K., for outlining all the incentives because there is such a huge substitute shortage, not only in District 25, but across the country. So thank you for taking these measures to make sure that our sub pool is always active and going. Thank you. Seeing no other discussions, questions, Lana, could you please call the vote? Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Shuniglia?
Yes.
Member Jogi?
Yes.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Philippak?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
That's it for Dr. K., correct? Yes, okay. We'll now move on to our second community input. Do we have any comments?
Melissa Kerr speaking. When will the second installment of the Cook County Property Tax Bill be delivered? We should have gotten it the beginning of July, and it should have been payable the beginning of August.
Okay, thanks for that question. We'll come back to you. Dr. Biden will come back.
We have to contact the assessor's office, Melissa.
Okay, we'll move forward to the future agenda items if they're, yep, future agenda items and topics with dates to be determined.
So we have a few things on here. Safety and security update, we plan to bring to the board in conjunction with our Arlington Heights School Resource Officers on September 27. The board asked for an update on current sex education laws. We'll actually bring that to you at the next meeting, which I believe is the 13th of September. And just so the board is aware, there's a letter going out to eighth-grade parents tomorrow about the eighth-grade preview of that unit. So that'll go out to all of our eighth-grade parents tomorrow. And then we'll also be doing a department highlights/strategic plan update for the board also at September 27.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Biden. And any new topics that we, you just, did you go over that, Dr. Biden? The new topics, please?
I did not.
Okay, any new topics from Dr. Biden or the board?
Madam President?
Yes, Rich?
Yeah, did have one topic that actually came up at our earlier meeting this afternoon about the code of conduct, the policies, we're doing our policy review of the code of conduct review.
Okay, noted. Thank you, Rich, for bringing that up. This is kind of the end of this meeting, but I'd like to call a motion to go back into closed session. I need a, I need a person.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Greg. We'll be going, adjourning into closed session now.
Let me have a roll call to go into.
Pardon?
How long do you need to go session, do you guess?
We're not sure, maybe half an hour to 45 minutes?
Hope.
No, we hope. Did I say we hope? About? Yeah, a roll call to move into closed session, Lana?
No, just a roll.
Oh, sorry.
Roll table, roll fair. Hi, hi.
Thank you.